This meeting of the City of Socorro City Council is set to begin. Due to the ongoing threat to public health, the City of Socorro, Texas Council and Commissions will be conducting a virtual meeting broadcasted by phone and live streaming services from council chambers located at 860 North Rio Vista Road, Socorro, Texas 79927 to practice social distancing and limit the number of people physically present at one time. There will be no physical access to a location mentioned above. We do ask everyone to silence the electronics to avoid any sound interruptions. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violators are subject to call disconnection and possible prosecution. Anyone who has signed up to speak or present will be called upon by the presiding officer to speak during public comment or on their specific agenda item in accordance with Government Code 551.042.
La reunión del Consilio de la Ciudad de Socorro está por empezar. Por el problema de salud pública en curso, el Consilio y las Comisiones de la Ciudad de Socorro, Texas transmitirá su reunión por teléfono y servicios de transmisión en vivo desde la sala del Consilio localizada en 860 Rio Vista Road, Socorro, Texas 79927, para practicar el distanciamiento social y limitar el número de personas físicamente presentes. No habrá acceso físico a la ubicación mencionada anteriormente. Les pedimos a todos que silencien su equipo electrónico para evitar intervenciones desunidas. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial ni revoltozo. Que no sigan estas reglas, su llamada será desconectada y puede ser infraccionado. A quien se haya apuntado para hablar o presentar, será anunciado por el oficial conduciendo la reunión para hablar durante los comentarios públicos o sobre su tema específico de la agenda de acuerdo con el Código del Gobierno 551.042.
It is now 6:12 PM. This meeting is called to order. Mr. Rodarte, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Establishment of quorum. Ruben Reyes.
Here.
Cesar Nebarres.
Here.
Ralph Duran is absent. Mayor Ivy Avalos present. Victor Perez.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. Item number four, public comments. We have two speakers for this item, mayor. Our first speaker is Miriam Cruz. Ms. Cruz?
Yes, hi, good evening. Thank you. I actually had a question, but I wanted to bring it up during public comment because I think it would be important that everyone be aware that it's a potential issue. I understand that the meetings follow Robert's Rules of Order per the charter and per City Council's adoption of that. I'm just trying to find though if there are specific rules that the City Council follows. If you look up online, there's different versions, and so I was just wondering if council or staff or if council could suggest to staff to upload so that not only council but also the community and constituents know which set of rules, of Robert's Rules, which version are the ones that are being followed. Maybe if there's a website, a link, or a PDF of some sort, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Sal Chagoya? Mr. Chagoya?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to mention a couple of things. I attended the SISB Board of Trustees and I really loved their presentation. I loved that their trustees were all in suits and were all in offices. And so I wanted to make a suggestion if maybe that could be adopted with our City Council. You know, I think for the past year, we've been seeing a lot of kitchens and diners, dineettes in the background, so maybe if you guys could reach out to Mr. Gonzalez, maybe if you guys could put a background for City Council. Really do love when Chief Burden comes out and he's in uniform and he has that big shield behind him, so maybe something like that can be adopted for City Council. SISB, they're non-paid and you guys are paid, so possibly having a little bit more of a presentation since you guys do represent our city in that source. I do want to also thank Ms. Rodarte and Mr. Arreta for steering the pilot program for the COVID vaccine. I couldn't get on the last time, but I saw the pictures and, you know, we just got more people in Socorro vaccinated and those are the things that Socorro should be proud of. And so kudos to Mr. Arreta, Ms. Rodarte for doing that. And also to Chief Burden for leading the way for the police department. Our neighborhoods continue to be safe. I'll be reaching out, chief. I want to send some donut puffy or some pizza for morale, so be on the lookout. I'll be contacting you, chief. Other than that, thank you and I appreciate it.
Mayor, those were all our speakers. Thank you. Moving on to presentation, item number five, presentation training session by Bruce Kaler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members. As you know, I am Bruce Kaler and along with Jim Martinez, who is also going to be assisting today, we are going to have a short presentation with regard to the council manager form of government. And this is an important topic as the council manager form of government is the government process under which the City of Socorro currently operates. And so if we could go to the next slide, please. And this is set forth in the City of Socorro City Charter and as indicated in section 1.02, the government of the City of Socorro is a council manager form of government. And so essentially, all of the powers of the city that it exercises is placed within the City Council, but in turn, they appoint the city manager who in turn is responsible to the City Council for the operation of the city. Next slide, please. And there are often questions with regard to what the council manager form of government relates to, and really the most simple analogy would be to a typical corporation. The typical corporation has stockholders. Those stockholders then elect a board of directors. It's in the board of directors' responsibility to hire a chief executive officer, and the chief executive officer then is responsible for the running of the corporation and the hiring and supervision of employees. Similarly, here with the council manager form of government, the voters are the individuals who elect the mayor and city council. Then, as set forth in the City Charter, the city council then appoints a city manager, and it's the city manager who has the responsibility to supervise the staff and to operate the city government and to ensure that the directives, ordinances, rules, laws of the City of Socorro and the state of Texas are in fact implemented appropriately. Next slide.
Bruce, if I may, if you'll stay on that slide for a minute.
Sure.
Mayor and council, I just, I thought, this is Bruce, a presentation Bruce put together by the way, so the reason it's so good and so effective is because it's his work. But I liked this slide particularly because it's no coincidence that stockholders and voters are in analogous positions. And if it's not obvious, stockholders is really another term for what we would call owners, right? I mean, the stockholders own the corporation and the board of directors gets their authority from the owners. And on the other side of the screen, it's the exact same dynamic. The voters are the equivalent of the owners. It's their government. They own it. And the mayor and city council get their authority from those owners, the voters, the citizens of Socorro. That's my two cents. Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you, Jim. No, that's a very important point is that Jim is absolutely right. The voters are the owners. They are the bedrock of the community and they make everything possible, including the, obviously, the election of the mayor and city council.
Publica en curso el concilio y las comisiones de la ciudad de Socorro, Texas. Transmitirá su reunión por teléfono y servicios de transmisión en vivo desde la sala del concilio, localizada en 860 Rio Vista Road, Socorro, Texas 79927, para practicar el distanciamiento social y limitar el número de personas físicamente presentes. No habrá acceso físico a la ubicación mencionada anteriormente. Les pedimos a todos que silencien su equipo electrónico para evitar intervenciones desunidas. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial ni revoltoso. Que no siga estas reglas, su llamada será desconectada y puede ser infraccionado. A quien se haya apuntado para hablar o presentar será anunciado por el oficial conduciendo la reunión para hablar durante los comentarios públicos o sobre su tema específico de la agenda de acuerdo con el código del gobierno 551.042.
It is now 6:12 PM. This meeting is called to order. Mr. Rodarte, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Establishment of quorum. Ruben Reyes.
Here.
Cesar Nevares.
Here.
Ralph Duran is absent. Mayor Ivy Avalos present. Victor Perez.
Here.
And Ivan Columbia Lobos.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. Item number four, public comments. We have two speakers for this item, mayor. Our first speaker is Miriam Cruz. Ms. Cruz.
Yes, hi, good evening. Thank you. I actually had a question, but I wanted to bring it up during public comment because I think it would be important that everyone be aware that it's, you know, that it's a potential issue. I understand that the meetings are, follow Robert's Rules of Order per the charter and per city council's adoption of that. I'm just trying to find though if there are specific rules that the city council follows. If you look up online, there's different versions. And so I was just wondering if council or staff or if council could suggest to staff to upload so that not only council but also the community and constituents know which set of rules, of Robert's Rules, which version are the ones that are being followed. Maybe if there's a website, a link or a PDF of some sort, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Sal Chagoya. Mr. Chagoya.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I attended the SISB Board of Trustees and I really loved their presentation. I love that their trustees were all in suits and were all in offices. And so I wanted to make a suggestion if maybe that could be adopted with our city council. You know, I think for the past year, we've been seeing a lot of kitchens and diners, dinettes in the background. So maybe if you guys could reach out to Mr. Gonzalez, maybe if you guys could put a background for city council. Really do love when Chief Burton comes out and he's in uniform and he has that big shield behind him. So maybe something like that can be adopted for city council. SISB, they're non-paid and you guys are paid. So possibly having a little bit more of a presentation since you guys do represent our city in that force. I do want to also thank Ms. Rodarte and Mr. Retza for steering the pilot program for the COVID vaccine. I couldn't get on the last time, but I saw the pictures and, and you know, we just got more people in Socorro vaccinated. And those are the things that Socorro should be proud of. And so kudos to Mr. Retza, Ms. Rodarte for doing that. And also to Chief Burton for leading the way for police, the police department. Our neighborhoods continue to be safe. I'll be reaching out, chief. I want to send some donut patty or some pizza for morale. So be on the lookout. I'll be contacting you, chief. Other than that, thank you and I appreciate it.
Mayor, those were all our speakers. Thank you. Moving on to presentation, item number five, presentation training session by Bruce Kaler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. As you know, I am Bruce Kaler and along with Jim Martinez, who is also going to be assisting today, we are going to have a short presentation with regard to the council manager form of government. And this is an important topic as the council manager form of government is the government process under which the city of Socorro currently operates. And so if we could go to the next slide, please. And this is set forth in the City of Socorro City Charter. And as indicated in section 1.02, the government of the city of Socorro is a council manager form of government. And so essentially, all of the powers of the city that it exercises is placed within the city council. But in turn, they appoint the city manager who in turn is responsible to the city council for the operation of the city. Next slide, please. And there are often questions with regard to what the council manager form of government relates to. And really, the most simple analogy would be to a typical corporation. The typical corporation has stockholders. Those stockholders then elect a board of directors. It's in the board of directors' responsibility to hire a chief executive officer. And the chief executive officer then is responsible for the running of the corporation and the hiring and supervision of employees. Similarly, here with the council manager form of government, the voters are the individuals who elect the mayor and city council. Then, as set forth in city charter, the city council then appoints a city manager. And it's the city manager who has the responsibility to supervise the staff and to operate the city government and to ensure that the directives, ordinances, rules, laws of the city of Socorro and the state of Texas are in fact implemented appropriately. Next slide, please.
Bruce, if I may, if you'll stay, if you'll stay on that slide for a minute.
Sure.
Mayor and council, I just, I thought, this is Bruce, a presentation Bruce put together, by the way. So the reason it's so good and so effective is because it's his work. But I like this slide particularly because it's no coincidence that stockholders and voters are in analogous positions. And if it's not obvious, stockholders is really another term for what we would call owners, right? I mean, the stockholders own the corporation and the board of directors gets their authority from the owners. And on the other side of the screen, it's the exact same dynamic. The voters are the equivalent of the owners. It's their government. They, they, they own it. And the mayor and city council get their authority from those owners, the voters, the citizens of Socorro. That's my two cents. Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you, Jim. No, that's a very important point is that Jim is absolutely right. The voters are the owners. They are the bedrock of the community and they make everything possible, including the, obviously, the election of the mayor and city council, which then appoints the city manager who then runs the city staff and departments. Next slide, please. And we're going to go through, and actually Jim is going to go through some of the duties and responsibilities because it's important to understand what the division of responsibilities is between the city council, the mayor, the city manager, and then we're going to talk very briefly about other officials. But it's important to understand that each has specific duties and responsibilities. Each has specific requirements under state law and under the city charter and under the ordinances that have been passed by city council. And so it's extremely important for a variety of reasons to ensure that the duties and responsibilities of each are performed by them, but they don't overstep their bounds and impact the duties and responsibilities that are specifically given to other individuals or entities or departments. And so keep that in mind as Jim discusses the duties. Then I'm going to close the presentation dealing with ethical responsibilities and really what it means to be a fiduciary and what duties and responsibilities of the city council, the city manager, and really all employees are. So Jim, why don't you discuss a little bit about the duties of the major players here?
Yes, sir, of course. If we can go to, go to the next slide. And the, this is a, if you read this, it's actually very helpful. The city council, it says, shall be the legislative and governing body of the city. And that, if you can scroll down on that slide, I think, is that the entire slide or is there another section? Leave it right there. Go back up to the previous slide. That was my fault. This is a quote from the city charter. It's article three and it's actually very helpful. If you, it's not exactly exciting reading, but if you take the time and go read the charter, I think it is informative. The second paragraph is the city council shall govern the affairs of the city. And that's a very broad statement, but if, when we go over some of the specifics, you'll see that by govern the affairs of the city, what that really means is it's sort of a macro level policy setting function that city council performs. And then below that, it's the city manager's duty to implement that policy, those policy decisions on the ground. And the second clause of this section I like, it says, "And to determine by majority vote, the best and most appropriate method and manner of efficiently performing the functions and providing the services of the city, consistent with the council manager form of government." And we'll come back to that in a moment. If I can have the next slide, please. And I do think it's telling that the first item that's listed is that the duties of city council is to appoint, supervise, and remove the city manager. That's one of the fundamental responsibilities of the city council. Because, and I think the corollary of that is if you're going to appoint, supervise, and remove the city manager, well, then I think by definition, you're going to hold her to account for the way she in turn performs her duties as city manager. The other ones underneath this are ensure enforcement of charter and ordinances. The number three there is arguably the second most important one. And we could have a fair argument that it's the most important one, is to adopt a budget and tax rate. If council did nothing else throughout the course of the entire year and you just adopted the budget and tax rate, I think the city could survive. Next is provide for rewards and commissions. Adopt, modify, and carry out plans proposed by the planning commission. Adopt, modify, and cause enforcement of codes and regulations. Provide for all public utilities, which we don't particularly do at this point. If I can go to the next slide. This completes the list that's in article three of the charter. It says pass ordinances and resolutions. That's probably, aside from individual ordinances, which would include tax and budget ordinances, that's probably council's single greatest, single greatest source of authority. Passing ordinances. I mean, those, those are actually laws. They have legal effect in the city of Socorro. And you can impose penalties for violations of those ordinances. And many of our ordinances do in fact contain penalties. Next is exercise police powers. Control and regulate the use of public streets and city property. Make investigation into municipal affairs. And then another one that I'm particularly conscious of is appoint and remove the city attorney and municipal judge. Council does appoint the city attorney and municipal judge and from time to time changes them. And call bond elections and special elections. Each of those is something that can be done only by the city council. And if you go back and read those again, and you don't need to go back to the previous slide, but if you just read those a few times, you do get the flavor of it. Those are macro level policy matters. Council is, it's almost like looking at the horizon and saying that council is deciding where to go, what general direction to take, which I think is very different from the city manager's responsibilities. If I can have the next slide, please. The one after that. There you go. Duties of mayor as part of city council. You're the official head of the city government. You chair and preside at city council meetings. You appoint special comedians as advisable or instructed by the city council. And I don't think we've had any special committees, at least during my tenure as city attorney. The charter does contemplate it and there are certainly many cities, city councils in the state of Texas that have committees and subcommittees. Even just, just down the road over in El Paso, that city council has a number of committees and subcommittees that are made up of subsets of the El Paso city council. And then number four, sign all official documents such as ordinances, resolutions, and conveyances. I'm not sure how many members of council, other than the mayor and mayor pro tem are aware. Typically, after every meeting, there are a number of documents to be signed. There are the ordinances, there are the resolutions, most contracts, deeds or easements when the city is acquiring or conveying property interests. And those all routinely go to the mayor. It's the mayor who signs those. If I can have the next slide? Thank you. The duties of the city manager, and these are relatively terse, but I think there's a lot to be read into them. She serves as the chief administrative and executive officer of the city. She appoints and removes all department heads with the advice and consent of city council. And this is a big one, number three. She sees that all laws, provisions of the charter and acts of city council are faithfully executed. And legally, the term executed, it doesn't involve life or death, I hope. Legally, the term executed, actually, it's a term of art and it means implementation. She enacts, she implements, she puts council's macro level policy decisions to work in the field. And the ordinances that council passes and adopts, it's the city manager that takes those ordinances and ensures that they are appropriately applied and enforced in the field. And then another big one, similar to the city council's sole authority to adopt a budget and tax rate, it's the city manager's duty to prepare and submit a proposed budget and a proposed capital program. And it's that by charter, it's her duty, she has to permit to city council. If you read the background state law that a pledge information in the adoption of a tax rate, she serves as what the Texas Local Government Code calls the budget officer. The city manager here in Socorro is the budget officer in terms of the state statute. And it's the state statute that also says it's the budget officer's duty to present a proposed budget to the city council every year. If I can have the next slide? I think we're at the end of those slides. Oh, too much. It's also her duty to report on finances and administrative activities of the city. And she makes those reports to city council, perhaps obviously. But at the same time, almost always, she simultaneously is reporting to the citizenry as a whole, either in the form of public meetings or in reports that are available publicly. It's her duty to keep the city council fully advised about the financial needs and condition of the city. And if you will note, there are unaudited financial statements that routinely come before the city council. Those are typically done on a monthly basis. There's a reason for that. There's a method to the madness. It's not just idle activity. The city manager by doing that is in fact carrying out her duty to keep the city council advised of the condition and needs of the city. Next one is to oversee the direction and completion of grant activity and to make other reports and perform other duties as set forth in the city charter or required by city council on the laws of the state of Texas. And that's a very general description of the city manager's duties. But I would contrast that, if you read the city manager's duties next to the list of the city council's duties, you get two directions or two focuses. City council's focus is at the macro level policy direction. And it's the city manager whose focus is below that. I think by design, intended to take those policy decisions and implement them so that, so that they have the intended effect in the real world. Other key officials, you've got the city attorney, that would be me. Got the chief of police, obviously, that's Chief Burton, and you do have our municipal court judge. Those are, those are the key players in terms of the appointed officials who work with the city manager and help to carry out the city council's decisions. And I think the next slide, I think we go back to Bruce.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. All right. Well, I wanted to also, and thank you, Jim, for that excellent presentation. I want to talk a little bit about ethics as it applies to the city council and really all employees of the city of Socorro. But let's be clear on one point, and that is the city code specifically states that the members of city council are expected to model this Socorro Code of Ethics. And so, as well as to follow the Robert's Rules of Order. But you as the leaders of the city of Socorro should, in all of your activities, set an example for the employees and the citizenry. And that is what is encoded in the city code and what is the ultimate expectation with regard to city council members. And also, all city officials, employees have a fiduciary duty to the city to be ethical and fulfilling their responsibilities of their positions. And fiduciary responsibilities is a very important concept in the law. It's not the typical duty that one would owe to someone else. A fiduciary is, is one of the higher duties that can be followed. For example, Mr. Martinez and I, we are fiduciaries to our clients. We have fiduciary obligation to our clients. And that is a high duty and there's multiple tiers. Let's go to the next slide, please. So, under the city's Code of Ethics, under the standards of conduct, there's multiple issues that apply here. First, obviously, nothing that any employee, department head, council member can do is to accept or solicit for personal gain, any benefit. And it doesn't have to just be monetary benefit. It can be any benefit whatsoever. And that can be anything from a political contribution to assistance on whatever matter may be at issue. So at all times, all employees, the mayor, city council, must hold themselves to the absolute highest level of integrity. Secondly, the official cannot use their position to secure any privileges or exemptions for themselves, but it goes beyond that. It includes to relatives or really anyone else. You cannot use a position to assist anyone other than what your official duties would be to assist citizenry. And so you need to make sure that all individuals within the city government follow the requirements. And that includes, on the third issue, not participate in making or influencing any city governmental decision or action in which they have a financial interest. And so there are mandatory disclosure requirements that relate to when an individual, whether it be an employee or a city council member or the city manager or anyone else, when they have a financial interest at an issue over which they have some responsibility. The fourth item is that you cannot give the impression that an individual can improperly influence in the performance of your duties. You cannot make it appear that you're going to take any action. And again, this applies to employees as well. You are not going to take any action which would indicate an improper motive or improper influence. And additionally, you have to make sure that in the performance of your official duties, that confidential information is only utilized for the specific purpose for which you have been provided with that information. That you do not use that or disclose that for any other reason, except for your official duties. Next slide, please. Additionally, and really six is identical, let me, as far as seven, this deals again, and several of the issues that deal with the Code of Conduct deal with financial interests. And that includes, as indicated on eight, receiving any fee or compensation for any services that you're performing for the city, apart from, obviously, your pay from the city of Socorro. And additionally, as indicated on nine, you cannot knowingly perform or refuse to perform any act or were to deliberately thwart the execution of city ordinances, rules, and regulations. And this relates, again, to fiduciary obligations. There are multiple fiduciary obligations. One of those is a duty of loyalty. Additionally, essentially, what the fiduciary obligation is that you as an employee or a city council member or whatever capacity, you may disagree with an action that the city council takes. Ms. Rodarte may disagree with the action that the city council takes. But at the end of the day, once that action has been lawfully taken, all officers of the city of Socorro are required to implement that policy and not to thwart it. And so despite the fact you may disagree with action that has been taken, you cannot take action that would undercut the lawfully agreed upon rules, ordinances, requirements, directives of the city of Socorro and its lawfully elected city council members. And so that sometimes can be difficult. But at the end of the day, everyone has to salute and say, yes, ma'am, yes, sir, and perform the duties regardless of whether they agree with the action taken. Next item, please. And that concludes our presentation today. And we can address any issues that may come up. This is an educational presentation today. As Jim has indicated, you know, there are a tremendous number of requirements set forth in state law, in the ordinances, in the city charter. This is a very broad brush presentation with regard to the city council manager form of government and really what the duties and responsibilities are of the major players in the city of Socorro. But it's been a pleasure to talk to you today and hopefully the presentation has been helpful and addresses some of the dividing lines that exist and where your duties begin and where other individuals' duties begin. So thank you all for your time today and I'll turn the meeting back over to the mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaler and Mr. Martinez. That was very informative. Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent. Victor Perez.
I'm sorry, who seconded, please? I couldn't hear.
Mr. Reyes.
Okay. I.
And Ivan Columbia Lobos.
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to our regular agenda, public hearing and ordinances. Public hearing of an ordinance for the Public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed rezoning of block ten, lot twenty-two. And block sixteen, lot one, East Lake Valley Unit Two subdivision located at one zero zero six one and one zero zero eight one. Judge Caldwell from C two general commercial to R two medium density residential for apartments. It is now six forty-two.
Mayor, we do have a speaker for this item, Miriam Cruz.
Hi, good evening. Um, I just. I just wanted to remind um city council that. Uh, even though this is something that I know was brought up in the grand plan for for this area. Um, apartments do tend to bring with them, you know, very specific set of issues. Couple of which um tend to be um, crime rate goes up, theft goes up. Um, and and so, y- you know, even though very likely going to be passed because a lot of these things never get opposed in city council. Um, I just wanted to bring those those to your attention and and as an issue that we may want to. Think about in the future, whether it's limiting the number of apartments. Um, in in a certain way because of um traffic that's going to be building there. Um, that's already building there, uh, and and so, you know, safety concerns and. And then also, um, just to consider, um. What, you know, what can we do as a community, as a city, to try to alleviate? You know, those those things that tend to follow apartment complexes. Um, I don't know if that's something that the city has looked into, if that's something, uh, there's different ideas of of what to bring into the city. Um, to try and 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 not, you know, just allow for. Like I said, for those things that follow uh apartment complexes to to just happen, just because they tend to happen. So I wonder if the city would would take into consideration, you know, speaking about that and 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 pondering on 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 those ideas. Thank you.
Public hearing is now closed at six forty-four P M. Item number ten, second reading and adoption to the hearing that just occurred.
Motion to approve or discussion?
Second.
Second. Mayor, we could hardly hear you.
Actually, Miss Mr. Reyes and 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 Madam Mayor, it's hard to hear.
Let me get closer to to microphone. Can you guys hear me?
Is that better?
Hmm, a little bit, but not, I mean, I I don't know if it's just the the settings there at the office. I'm not sure.
But Mr. Reyes, can you can you speak? Because I I couldn't hear you right now.
What about there? I got closer and kind of yelling, almost yelling.
Yeah, I guess they need to raise the volume there where you guys are at.
Better?
Little better, yeah.
A little better?
There?
Yeah, better.
Evening, mayor and council. This is an an application for zoning change. Uh, there's two lots that were recorded in the final plat for East Lake Valley Unit Two. When the developer brought this plat to you, uh, they. They uh had told us that two properties were going to be recorded and used as commercial or retail. However, uh, they had a change of plans and they now want to use these properties for uh. Apartments for residential use. Properties are located on East Lake Valley Unit Two. They're off of uh Nuevo Waco Tanks Boulevard, next to where the new homes are being built. This is part two. That's why you don't see the parcels. Uh, but these are the the two lots that are getting rezoned. I'm going to show you the final plat so you can get a better idea of what it is. Here it is. This is the way it was recorded. Uh, these two lots were going to be used for commercial. Now they want to use them for residential. I don't know. Do you have any questions for about this one?
Mr. Perez?
Thank you. Um, not so much a question, but a comment, and maybe Mr. Nevares can remember as well. Um, we were told that we were going, that there was going to be a c- a commercial area there and even possibly. Um, higher end uh commercial um, commercial location. And so. I'm, this is like changing the the uh midstream we were we were told. Or and and I know that that the the developer can change his or her mind. But we were told that it was going to be a a commercial area with higher end, uh, you know, um establishments. And so I I kind of feel a little bit let down, kind of tilted, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, I agree with that because it included, like Mr. Perez said, some high end uh, some some restaurants. Um, coffee shops, apartment buildings, somewhat like they have at the uh.
Montecitos, right?
Yeah, North Mesa, yeah.
Yes, that is still the plan. However, that's going to be in phase three. A lot line, I don't know if you can see it there from your screen, but this lot line that you see here, this is going to be phase three. And this is where they're planning on building the Montecito type of uh apartments. Those are the ones that are going to have a mixture of commercial and residential properties and parks. Uh, the only thing that is separating uh the residential from this new uh mixed use area is going to be the Boulevard. Uh, Judge Caldwell Road uh roadway. This uh arterial is going to have a bike lane that is going to connect from Nuevo Waco Tanks. All the way down to Moon Road. And then furthermore, there's going to be more commercial strips along Nuevo Waco Tanks. And they're going to extend all the way down to North Loop and wrap around all the way to the city limit. So there is still going to be some commercial properties. Except these two, uh, they're just asking for them for to be allowed to be used for com- uh residential instead.
Mr. Perez?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, and I apologize if I cut somebody off, but very quickly.
I'm not sure if you're hearing me. Mayor, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
I can hear you now.
Okay, I I've been calling you. Okay.
Okay, so then, um, quick question. I'm sorry, question, uh, Joe, um, are these intended um apartment buildings? And are they going to be income based apartment buildings? That we know of?
We don't know much details about what what type of apartments they're planning on building there. Uh, they, the uh builder just mentioned that they want to build as many as they can. They're estimating a maximum of twenty-two units uh in these two lots. So we we're not sure what type of permits or or uh, because we don't have those details yet so far.
And I say this, I just to follow up, I'm at a mayor, and because if we're if we're thinking, or rather, not that we, but if the developer is thinking of. Uh, having higher end apartment buildings like the Montecitos on on Mesa Street, then what are these apartments going to be like? So that's that's my my concern. And I know that's a little early in the process, but the thing is that, again, we were told some things at the beginning, and it seems like they're changing at this point.
Ms. Villalobos, I believe you had a question?
Yes, thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. uh Perez and Mr. Nevares are absolutely right. When we started with this and we even mentioned, you know, that, you know. Uh, we, you know, we were excited about what they were saying they were bringing and hopefully that it wouldn't change. And here we are. And at this point, we don't even know what type of apartments they're trying to put in here. So I don't think we have all the information we need to make an informed decis- decision today. Uh, regarding these apartments. Yeah, I feel the same way, let down. Uh, ye- yes, you know, they're going to build on the other side, maybe, you know, if the if the growth continues. Um, I just feel like um, like um, we we're just. I I just feel that down big time, that, you know, at this point, they're trying to change this. Uh, trying to feed us, you know, information, oh, well, but but later we're going to build this and this. And then what if it doesn't come true? Um, what if, you know, construction halts? Or they change their mind, et cetera, et cetera. And uh and just the fact that we don't have the full information right now of what type of apartments these are going to be. I don't think we should be voting on this, and I hope uh my coun- councilmen feel the same way. Thank you.
Mayor, the uh engineers on the line, Jorge Escarate, he can answer all those questions that I don't have an answer for. Uh, he would like to speak, uh, so that he can answer all of your questions. Jorge Escarate?
Mr. Escarate?
Yo, okay. Yes, thank you. Uh, Jorge Escarate with C A Group for the record, uh, to answer uh council's uh comments and questions. There's there's not been a change. Uh, Joe really uh understood the entire master plan for the East Lake Valley. Um, it is in East Lake Valley Phase Three or Unit Three. That the the, I'm gonna call it the high end, the mixed use development is proposed to be. I think when uh, and J K Fobada made the presentation at council on the master plan. Um, I think some of the council members asked, I mean, are we talking to like Starbucks, uh, you know, stuff like that would hopefully be coming in. And it was on the higher end, a little bit closer to E P C C on the access point up there, up there. Um, this one, I think, uh, when I talked to the the developer, the intent was always in their eyes to be apartment. Uh, they got, when they rezoned the property to to commercial. He was under the opinion that you can build apartments under the commercial zoning district. Um, and that, uh, and that's not allowed, quote unquote. Uh, so what we're asking for is to downgrade uh from a commercial development to a residential development for apartment uh uses. Uh, the proposed apartment is a, it's going to be a per market um apartments. It's not going to be income based. It's going to be at market apartment. Um, and the reason that uh it makes more mu- better sense to have an apartment is typically on commercial development, you kind of see. Uh, the commercial development that has been uh developed along Nuevo Tanks. Is primarily on along major roadways that they have a lot of trips generated by the rooftops. In a development of this that is a little bit more in the interior, it will not generate the number of trips. Uh, that will cause a activity for commercial uh to be in those sector and on those two properties. That's why the the intent was always to do residential or multifamily. However, when they plotted this property, they identified it as commercial and zoned it accordingly for commercial mistakenly. Uh, but the intent was always residential for multifamily. But uh, the higher end stuff is still in the plan. Um, they're right now, as you know, they finished uh East Lake Valley Unit One. They've gone into East Lake Valley Unit Two. Right now, that's under construction. East Lake Valley Unit Four is completed, so they've already have rooftops in units one and four. Two will probably have rooftops in the next, probably two months or months, you'll start seeing some rooftops. With all this activity, uh, they're probably in the next sometime this year is try to move over to. Uh, Phase Three or Unit Three, which you call, which is more of the mi- mixed use development. To capture the activity that's going on across Nuevo Tanks Road with um some of the industrial component of it. And then now with all the rooftops that are being added as units one, two and four. I'm not sure if that addresses any of your questions or it brings up more questions. I'm not sure, but I'm here to address any and answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Mr. Nevares, did you have a question?
Well, it's more of a comment. Uh, I think this goes back to. The initial, uh, we'll give you the moon and the stars, and then all of a sudden we get the the fine details of what the plan is. And it's always not favorable. Uh, if you would have come out initially with the actual plan of this. Um, honestly, what we need is commercial. And not always north of the freeway, because it seems like we get the uh, the end of the stick here south of the freeway and. We're looking for improvements, Mr. Escarate, not. Not this continuing uh of just low budget construction. Uh, I don't think we can agree to that right now, and I go back to what Ms. Columbia Lobos said. Uh, uh, not until we really get what what the plan is. Uh, concrete plan is, then we can bring this up again and and vote on it. Because right now, I'm honestly not in approval of this.
Mr. Reyes?
Can can you? Okay, go ahead.
I think I'm going to say what everybody's thinking. Um, we don't want those apartments. We want to keep it as commercial. Bottom line.
Mr. Perez, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, at this time, uh, I'll go ahead and make a my motion to uh not approve the the um. The change uh in terms of permit uh zoning and keep it as a commercial. Uh, until such time that we have more solidified plans from the developer.
Second.
And we do have a speaker for this item, Miriam Cruz.
Thank you. Um. I'm 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 actually really happy with your guys' motion. Uh, surprised by it, but happy. Um. I did want to mention, what I mentioned earlier. I know that there was an area where there was going to be apartments. I remember apartments being part of the plan. And so I, just in addition, not that you guys need any more, you know, ammunition to your your motion. But if this were to get approved even down the line, you know, are we talking multiple apartment complexes in the area? Um, I I think that's a good question to bring up, uh, moving forward. Because I remember it was very clear they kept talking about, um, and I mostly I mostly got this information from the planning and zoning meetings. But, um, because they really went into detail there. So, you know, the question would be the the apartment complexes, they were presented as. They're going to have a, they were going to be next to a park, and the park was going to be open to the public, not just to the people from the apartment complexes, but from the apartments. Um. And so, uh, I'm glad you guys are making this decision, but I would also just, as a constituent, be very intrigued to know. You know, what what the in, what the rest of this plan is going to look like in its entirety. Um, because you guys are right, they, you know, the they bring up some ideas, they they sell it. You know, very beautifully, very promising, and then and then things change, and and unfortunately, it hasn't happened once, it hasn't happened twice, it's happened. Um, obviously, very often and more often than than we would like, so, um. I would just keep that in mind as well, because I do remember some apartments being, um, part of the plan, and so.
Ms. Cruz, your time is up.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
We're, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Reyes.
I said yes.
Oh, yes to uh not approving this right now.
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent. Victor Perez?
I.
And Ivan Columbia Lobos?
Yes, and uh just uh may, um, uh, Mr. Reyes, we can barely hear you, okay?
Okay.
Moving on to Grants Department, item number eleven. Discussion and action to approve a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Office of the Governor, O O G. Homeland Security Grants Division Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Two, Local Border Security Program, L B S P. Grant for the Socorro Police Department. There is no match requirement for this grant.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Alejandra Valades, Grants Coordinator for the city of Socorro. We are requesting your approval to submit the grant application. There is no match requirement for this grant. We are requesting approximately eighty thousand dollars for overtime hours for the Socorro Police Department. To reduce border related criminal activity in the region. We have participated in the um local border. We have participated in the, um, Local Border Security Program for the past few years. Um, so this is a continuation grant, the resolution is required as part of the application process.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent, Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Logos?
Yes.
Item number twelve, discussion and action to assign city manager as mayor's official designee in all duties and tasks for the State of Texas Office, the Governor's E Grants, Grants Application and Management System.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, we are requesting that city manager be designated as mayor's official designee in all matters related to the E Grants Management System. The Socorro Police Department, uh, receives a lot of funding from the federal government, as well as the state through the Office of the Governors, and the Office of the Governors does use the E Grants Online Management System. Um, currently, we have eleven active grant projects that are managed through that online platform. And we have five pending grant applications. Um, that's a lot of grant projects that we require budget, um, adjustments, um, certifications. Um, and many different daily tasks that are required of our mayor. We have found that in the past, in order to increase efficiency and timeliness of these tasks. Um, we have, uh, designated our city manager as official designee so that she can go in there and make changes as needed. Um, in the backup, we did include the previous designation that we had operated under. Um, and now, since we have a new mayor, we have to make, um, those designations again. I'm not sure if you have any questions.
Mr. Perez?
Uh, not so much a question, but I had that just, just for confirmation. Uh, this is pretty much standard in terms of, of grant, of the submission and, and, um, I guess modifications of grants, correct, in terms of, of, of what we do?
Yes, many other cities, um, also do this, we, we've done this in the past for several years now. And many other cities also do that because some of the requests that are made by the Office of the Governors are, um, timely, and so they require us to go in there and make the adjustment from one day to the next. Um, and with eleven active grant projects and five pending applications. Um, it typically is a lot of demands for, in terms of time for a mayor.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent, Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Logos?
Yes.
Moving on to Police Department, item number thirteen, discussion and action on approving the mayor to sign the Texas statewide interoperability channel plan agreement.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, David Burton, Chief of Police. So, when we use, uh, grant money or state funding for, uh, purchase of radios, which in this case we are, uh, pursuing a grant for that. It requires a, uh, interoperable, interoperable communication, uh, paperwork or M O U with the state. And basically what that means is, uh, that we won't, uh, limit our radio capacity to just a solo entity. Which would be the Socorro Police Department, uh, that we will accept other, uh, agencies or entities, uh, on our radio channels. Uh, it, within our radio capabilities, so that we can use those for, uh, crisis-type incidents or events. Where the interoperable planning is required. We have got, uh, local, um, interoperable communication, um, M O U's in place. But, uh, we were, uh, missing out on the state, uh, requirement that is, uh, necessary for the state funding. So that's why we're asking for, uh, the signature on this.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent, Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Logos?
Yes.
Item number fourteen, discussion and action on approving the purchase of a shooting decisions and proficiency training facility.
Motion to approve or discussion?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, David Burton, Chief of Police. So, this is a modular facility that we would be looking for, it's twenty-four hundred square feet. Uh, it would go on the footprint of where the police department is currently located on Moon Road. It is a panel-type construction, which means that we can alter the way that the inside looks. Uh, we do that specifically because of the building types that are located within the city. We can alter the inside to look like, uh, a, a building that we may be required to, uh, use some uh, tactical-type, um, entry into. Um, the bottom line is, is we don't have a lot of range time available to us. And when we do do range time, it is expensive, because we're actually shooting ammunition. Um, this modular facility is a non-ballistic, which means that we don't use, uh, the firearms per se. But we use training weapons, uh, and training weapons are, um, souped-up paintball guns. Um, they, they're what they call simmunitions. Uh, they won't penetrate this, this paneling, uh, this paneling can go outside. It has a, a fairly robust, um, warranty that comes with it. And it will allow us to do, uh, more proficiency training for our firearms use. Unfortunately, the caveat to this, I wanna tell you, is that we had a, a high-risk incident, which happened last month. Uh, we seized a large amount of product that belonged to an organized group, um, south of the border. And they actually sent individuals over to monitor us removing it from the residence. Um, that is an alarm for me, uh, especially because we don't, we did not portray at that scene uh, a proficiency that we should have done, uh, as far as, uh, tactics is concerned. So that would be something else that I would look to implement, uh, in this, uh, building. The other thing, of course, is, uh, the active shooter scenario, uh, is very much unfortunately alive in the United States. Um, and this would allow us to, uh, run not only our, our, um, E R T team through, um, high-risk type events. But also to implement an annual-type training, uh, for the rest of the police officers. Again, to improve their proficiency, uh, in their firearms use. The other thing too, is though it can't all be just firearms, right? So this has to be a non-shooting-type scenario too, a shooting decision house. So we can set up, uh, models that are inside, uh, the residence or inside the, the facility that present us or prevent, present a challenge for the officer to, to use another type of, um, approach other than their weapon. And in, in doing so, it helps us reduce any type of use of force. I'll take any questions.
Mr. Perez?
Thank you, uh, Chief Burton, why the disparity in, in prices from thirty-nine to fifty-seven to four-hundred thousand?
So, there are, there are multiple, um, vending, uh, vendors out there, uh, that provide products. Some of them only do ballistic panels, uh, some of them do non-ballistic panels. Um, the terminology, the general terminology for this type of facility is called a shoot house. Even though that's not necessarily what we're using it for. Um, so when you go out to market and you ask for a non-ballistic shoot house or a shoot house. Sometimes you get the, the high-end type, um, product. The four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar one, they don't do a non-ballistic, but they will provide, uh, the same kind of panels and construction. Uh, just at a, at a much higher rate.
So then the Cintec is something that you're comfortable with in terms of the product and the need, uh, the needs that, uh, it'll satisfy?
So, the que- what I'm looking for is something that stands up outside. Um, it would be nice to have an inside, uh, facility, but that's not feasible with our budget. Uh, would I like the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project? Yes, please, I'll take that, yes. Um, but again, we can't afford that. So then reasonably, what do I have to look at that can accomplish the goal? That can stand up to our weather and heat that we have here, the winds especially? What can we use to stand up here? And then what will, uh, what will be modular for us so we can redesign? That's a very important part as well, I don't want something that's just built and stays that way. I wanna be able to change the inside depending on the scenario, uh, that we may face.
One more question, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Perez.
Uh, and then also, so then, wh- what is it about the contact, uh, connect, excuse me, uh, modular shoot house, uh, fifty-seven? I, you know, in terms of, of what we're, of what we see here, I mean, the, it's what is about, uh, maybe, uh, uh, I guess, a eighteen-thousand, nineteen-thousand-dollar price difference?
Right, so the, one is poly, okay, so the, the, the higher cost end is a poly product or a plastic product. Uh, the lower one is a sandwiched, um, wooden boards that are then weather-protected.
And so, um, there's, there's not a preference, I mean, because at this point, I'm, I'm thinking if we're going to invest money. Uh, I'd rather do something that would be more longer-term. And, and it, it fit the needs of, of, of the department, so they can get as much training time and, and get as, I guess, for the lack of a better term, more bang for the buck, so to speak.
I agree.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that, it's just, uh, trying to stay within the budget as far as what I have for equipment cost right now. So what, what do I have that I can actually afford and then carry me through to the end of the year? Uh, for the rest of the equipment that, that I'm going to need, and that includes vehicles, another canine, uh, ballistic vests, which, which are all expensive items. The fifty-seven-thousand-dollar one, if you would approve that, that would be the one that I would choose. But again, that's, that runs more than what I was looking at as far as my budget was concerned.
Is there, I'm sorry, just, uh, is there a way that we can supplement from, from the administrative side, and this is for staff, I'm not sure?
So, uh, uh, just one more thing for council's consideration, they're not part of the by-board. So again, now we're going over the fifty-thousand-dollar.
Correct, so we would have to go out for bid.
Okay.
If, if that's what we choose to do. Sorry. Mr. Reyes, you had a question?
I got, uh, two questions, um, who's, who's building it? I mean, they're, they're selling you the kit, and then, uh, does the city build it? And then, the other one is, can, can this be upgraded? Let's say, uh, next year we get more money, and you're like, we can, I don't know, make it bigger or reconfigure it a little bit.
Yeah, that, that's correct, so, we're actually gonna build it, um, it doesn't take a lot to put it together. Uh, once you put the, uh, outside frame on, you can actually hang the, uh, the panels, and that's either of the designs that we're looking for. Again, when we would make alterations to the inside, that would be on us, we wouldn't be looking for Public Works to do that, uh, for us. It's a fairly simple process, I've been through the, um, there's actually YouTube videos on how to put both of these products together. So that's an easy-type situation, I don't foresee anything as far as a problem is, uh, for that is concerned. If we want to expand it later on, uh, yes, the answer is, because it's a modular design, we can actually buy additional, um, material. And then add to that later. The only thing we wouldn't be able to do then is go from a non-ballistic to a ballistic. In other words, we'd have to set up the ballistic at the very beginning, but again, you're talking almost a half-million dollars for that type of size.
And so the Cintec is, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Perez.
So then the Cintec modular to Mr. Reyes's point, it is upgradable, uh, in, in the long term?
It is upgradable as far as size, sir, not as far as becoming then a ballistic-type facility. It wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do that. We, there, there's a, there's a concrete, uh, there's a concrete product called Sacon Concrete. It's a fibrous concrete, it's actually designed to absorb, uh, ballistic rounds. Uh, that would be an inside shooting, uh, type, uh, event, and we would have to implement that type of construction.
And do you have plans for that in the, in the near future?
No, no, sir. Um, again, once we're starting talking about live fire in a shoot house, which is a very constricted area. Um, there's some safety concerns that come along with that, that's pretty much only for high-speed type teams. So would I put the E R T or the SWAT team through that? Yes. Uh, the other thing is that those facilities, some of those facilities already exist. Uh, not locally to us, but on the McGregor Range, uh, we've actually been out to the, uh, D E A facility out there, the federal, uh, federal land. And they've actually allowed us to use, use that, but they're shoot house, they're a ballistic shoot house only. Locally, I want something that I can, um, just, if, if we had thirty-minute downtime, an hour downtime. We can go out back, we can practice room-clearing, uh, type, uh, tactics. Um, I could do that at the patrol level, which, again, based on the scenario that I was faced with a couple, with last month on that seizure. That's patrol officers that did that, they're just not, they weren't up to the proficiency, and it could have gone really bad. Um, so I wanna make sure that we, we know what we're doing out there.
And then final question, Madam Mayor, by me?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, and, and so then, and again, I'm just pointing out that maybe we can do it, I'm not sure. Would we be able to maybe contract with the, uh, the skeet club that, uh, the skeet trap club that's out on Alameda? Is that still in operation that maybe we could, it's close enough to where maybe officers on, on, you know, can go out there and, and practice? Again, I, I, I'm not sure if it, that's feasible, but just throwing it out.
There's, so there's shooting and then there's tactical, okay, they're not the same thing. Um, we have a shooting range available to us, that's E P C C, they're really, really good about letting us use that. But it's not a movement-type situation in close confines, and that's, you can't, you can't, um, recreate that. Unless you build a facility that can do that for you. Uh, there's, there's no range out there where there's a maze basically that you have to go through. Uh, you come into another room, there, there's a target that you're looking at, or, or a, a mannequin that you're addressing. And, and that might, uh, demonstrate that that is a no-shoot, so then I'm moving on. And then the next room I come into is a shoot situation, and then the next one is a no-shoot situation. And it's that type of evolving, or that type of evolving process, that's tactical. That's where I need to get, uh, the guys and girls to, in the police department.
Great, so if I may, I'll, I'll go ahead and amend my motion to approve Cintec modular?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you guys hear me? I have questions.
We can't see you, so, uh, we don't know if you're asking a question or not, but, uh, go ahead, Ms. Villa Logos.
Well, no, I, I, I'm trying to see if you guys can hear me. Chief, uh, any grants for this, for these type of, uh, uh, buildings, um, units?
In, okay, so.
Have you, uh-huh, explored for the future?
So we, we're not allowed to buy, so, uh, last year, Alejandra and I were, uh, trying to buy, first of all, you can't buy any weapons, okay? Um, so we were, but then we tried to buy training rounds, um, for training, for this type of training, and the answer was no. Um, and so right now, there is no grant available for, now, that can change as far as language is concerned. But right now, you're not allowed to, uh, purchase this type of facility with that.
So the building you can't, I'm sorry, yeah, you can hear me, so the building you can't, uh, try to get grants for, not this particular building, but for the future?
So right now, we put in, I mean, we're looking at twenty-twenty-two grants that we're applying for, in this, this language. So construction, which is what this would be classified as, would not be allowed.
I see, thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent, Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Logos?
Yes.
Moving on to City Manager, item number fifteen, discussion and action on legislation regarding annexation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I am going to ask if we can move item number fifteen and sixteen into executive. And if it's okay if we wait till the end of the meeting to do that. Uh, and that's to, um, ask questions to the, our attorney for counsel, for legal counsel advice. Do we have a motion to?
Mo- motion to move items fifteen and sixteen into executive.
And wait till the last of the meeting to do that?
And wait, yes, and wait till last of the meeting.
Yes, second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent, Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Logos?
Yes.
Item number seventeen, discussion and action to approve agreement with Code Four Emergency Services for the planning, management, and execution of medical consulting and management services to include a vaccination site in Socorro, Texas. And authorize the city manager or her. to include a vaccination site in Socorro, Texas and authorize the City Manager or her designate to execute contract.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, we're extremely excited. There is a draft that was placed on the agenda. Since then, that draft has changed, we will share the new contract. Our legal made some recommendations to the language and Code Four agreed to it. So we're now at the final stage and ready to execute. We would, if we sign the contract, we would be vaccinating next week. We do have, right now, the state will be giving us six hundred vaccinations for next week and we wanna make sure that we're ready to go once the contract is signed. I don't know if you all have any questions, we do have a site plan, if you all would like to see that. We are thinking of using, well, not thinking, we are gonna use the Campanario as our site, as our vaccination site. Scott, I don't know if you want to go through anything, or Jonathan from Code Four?
Hello, Council members and Mayor, Scott Davidson with Code Four Emergency Services. We've been working closely with your team for several weeks now. We are excited about the progress that has been made. As mentioned, we have identified a site, are working with the property management and ownership there. We have plans to roll out and we are prepared to move immediately to mobilize resources to begin this build and to put shots in arms as soon as next week.
Mayor, as soon as the next person, I'd like to comment.
Mr. Reyes?
I just have a question on, is the Campanario charging us anything, rent, or...
That's something that I know Code Four was working with them, I don't know exactly how. Scott, do you wanna answer that?
Yeah, thus far in conversations, they've been really excited to support us, the details of which are, we're hoped to finalize on a call tomorrow afternoon pursuant to the decision made tonight, but thus far, they've been great partners and are excited to contribute.
Ms. Villalobos?
And I really just have a comment, I wanna thank everyone that was involved with this. I know it's been like pulling teeth to get our voices heard and even though I was a very, very small part in it, Mayor, I know you had a lot to do with it, Rodarte, you were relentless. Victor, you're our miracle worker and I just really, and everybody else that was involved. I don't know you all personally, but I just really, really wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart and our constituents.
Mr. Nevaris?
And thank you guys enough, this is what we needed. And I'll concur with Ms. Villalobos, thanks to Victor and team, Ms. Rodarte, and we're extremely proud of you guys for just being so relentless and getting this to our city.
Correct, so we wouldn't be able to do this without our team. Alejandra has been a huge part on it also, I mean, I think everyone, department heads have a little bit to do with everything that happens. But I am extremely grateful for the team that I have and we're here today and I think we're making history, so. Really excited.
Mr. Perez?
And yeah, I wanted to add my voice to you all as well, you all have done a great job. I think this is a perfect, perfect example of private and public partnerships for the community good. And so, I know, I don't know if we have anybody from the Campanario, but I know that they have also, have been good community partners. And so I just wanted to underscore all of the accolades that my colleagues are saying. You all have done a great job and, you know, let's get after it, you are doing a fantastic job, thank you.
Thank you.
Ruben... Oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to say thank you as well and thank you to Code Four and everybody that helped out at our previous vaccination event as well. It was just the start that we needed and hopefully this leads to bigger and better things for all of us.
And I just wanna say that we wouldn't be able to do it without the support of the Mayor and Council. So we're able to do what we do because you allow us to, so thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent, Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Yes.
Thank you, Scott, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll see you soon.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on to Mayor and Council, item number eighteen, discussion and action to direct staff on the creation of an ordinance to monitor pet grooming locations in the spirit of avoiding any potential mistreatment of pets.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council, Mayor had brought this ordinance up. There was a couple of situations and I think that we're all in agreement that pet grooming needs, and other businesses need regulations and more overseeing of our part to make sure that our pets are treated well with respect and with care. And I think she was a huge advocate, I know that the City of El Paso did this back in two thousand eighteen and I think it's time that we follow. We do have a person that's going to speak on this item. I don't know if you wanna hear from him first or you have any discussion before then?
Mr. Perez?
Yes, thank you, I just want, and I'm not sure if it'll be part of the ordinance, but in terms of consideration, if it can be part of this, I don't know. The experience that the groomers have in terms of grooming our pets, I think that, I know there's a process of gaining experience, but if it's a person that doesn't have a whole lot of experience, they should be monitored or they should have a mentor of some sort, again, I don't know if it's applicable here, but I think that that's important because part of not injuring or in animals is for them to be groomed by people that are experienced and, or at least overseen by somebody when they're doing it if they don't have the experience. Again, that's just my two cents on that.
Correct, so items that Mayor had suggested was must attend a groomer training course, get a certificate, must obtain a groomer license, sworn statements and background eligibility, groomer license can be revoked or suspended, shop certificate required and must be posted, must maintain groomer list, must require background checks of groomers, must maintain shop hygiene and conditions as to not endanger pets, implement precautions to ensure animals are not abused, provide means for the owners of pets to observe the grooming process, ensure all pets are current on vaccine and microchips, and report all injuries or deaths. Right, and the list goes on and on, so we will do the research and make sure that we look at other cities and see what they have, like I tell you, the City of El Paso did one in two thousand eighteen. So we've been looking at that and see how we can implement that here in the City of Socorro.
Mayor?
Ms. Villalobos?
And just so you guys know, my niece is a pet groomer, she's a licensed pet groomer and she works for PetSmart and they will not allow you to touch any animal without having that license, that certificate, and it's always posted so that you know that whoever's handling your pet is licensed and they have to do continuing, continuous education on it. So I give kudos, Mayor, for bringing it to the table and for thinking of the little ones, the four-legged animals that we all love, thank you.
Mayor, we have a speaker for this item, Gustavo Vazquez? Mr. Vazquez?
Hi, yes, my name is Gustavo. I have reached out to Ivy after I had taken my dog Athena to a local grooming place in Socorro. Basically, what happened was that I was misinformed about what was happening with her at the grooming place. I was told that she was having a panic attack and she was sent to the vet. Everything was totally opposite, it caused her to have a stroke and this happened Saturday and Sunday she passed away. So I just think this is something that should really be approved because I don't want anyone else to be jailing or going through what I've been going through these past days, then surpassing.
Mayor?
Ms. Villalobos?
And I'm sorry, I didn't get the speaker's name, but we are so sorry that that happened to you, to your pet. I know I'm a huge pet lover, I live on a farm, I have lots of animals and every time I lose an animal, it's very painful. And to lose it to negligence is not only painful, but you feel hopeless. So, thank you for bringing it to Mayor and hopefully we can get this passed and so that no other pet suffers at the hands of any service company, whether it was, you know, intentionally or not, they should be prepared.
Mr. Nevaris?
Mayor and Council, may I suggest we allow, there's already a grooming place on Alameda that allows you, or they notify you as soon as they're gonna start working on your dog, cat, whatever the case may be, and it's extremely helpful to see how they take care of your pets, from bathing them to the drying, the trimming. I mean, they go live, they call you and you're there to view and I think that's a great idea, Mayor. And I would hope for that to be part of the process going forward.
Yes, it is, it's under, provide means for the owner of the pet to observe the grooming process. So it's definitely under there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent, Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action to direct staff to amend Section forty-six point one, definitions under nuisance and ordinance, Section twenty-eight dash twenty-two, one weeds or grass to better the community appearance and avoid unsanitary conditions.
Motion to approve, yes.
Okay, so, can you guys hear me? I'm here asking Council to allow us to amend Section forty-six point one definition and the ordinance twenty-eight two. If you guys have the backup on the Section forty-six one definition and it's gonna be number two, keeping, storing, accumulating rubbish, including newspaper, abandoned vehicles, refrigerators, stoves, furniture, tires, and cans on premises for ten days, I wanted to reduce the ten days for three days. And it says or more, unless the rubbish or object is completely enclosed in a building or is not visible to public street. So that's one of them. Number four, allowing weeds, which we're gonna include a grass and we're talking about the height of it. I'll continue reading, weeds mean all rag and uncultivated vegetation grown or mowed that has grown more than thirty-six inches in height and then that one, I would like to lower it for it to be six inches in height, or may create an unsanitary condition or become a harborage for rodents, vermin, and other diseases carrying pets regardless of the height of the weeds. And then on Section twenty-eight twenty-two, it's gonna be number one, weeds or winter grass. And it's gonna go to the last sentence, which it says attain a greater height than twelve inches and that one, two, will go down to six inches. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is because I've been getting a lot of calls, I don't know if the rest of the Council gets those calls about people not cleaning their yard. We know that court compliance goes, they let them know the violation and you get a lot of time to clean up, they take more time, they call, they ask for more time and by the time they actually go and clean it, I mean, we're talking about a whole big old mess. And I just wanted to direct staff to look into it.
Mayor, after District One, please.
Mr. Nevaris?
You're on mute, sir.
Sorry, I'm in complete agreement of this. Mr. Reyes hit it right on the spot. The more time we give them, the more time they're gonna take to clean up. And I think we've gone through so many years of this nuisance and ice swords around the city and because of that, we're getting now pitches of, instead of commercial buildings, let's just do apartments, let's do low-income apartments in Socorro. I'm done with the way it looks, let's clean it up, folks. And so I'm in complete agreement with Mr. Reyes, let's do this to a three-day and code compliance, man, you're gonna be busy.
Ms. Villalobos?
Ms. Rodarte, this question is for you, ma'am. So if, and I'm in agreements too, at first I thought maybe three days were too little, but I believe that we continue to give them warnings, correct? They have several warnings.
Yes, ma'am, and that sometimes falls within state law of what we can allow the property owner to, in order for them to comply. So we need to look at all that, like for inoperable vehicles, I just found out it's thirty days 'cause that's what state law requires. I know our city planner, Michael Medina, was explaining to me earlier today of, you know, other requirements that we need to go back and check and make sure that we're not violating any state laws or court enforcement. You know, they go out there, they get trained, they get certified, so they're the experts and we just wanna make sure, at the end of the day, what we want is our community to comply, right? So how do we get there? How do we make our residents comply, you know, do we do an educational campaign? Do we, you know, and I just feel, okay, three days, we do have three court enforcers, there's a lot of land to cover, but we're not here to make excuses, we're here to, you know, execute whatever direction you give us. Just making sure, but I know that Mike had shared a little bit of more information with me regarding this.
I'm sorry, and before you jump into Mike, my second question was, we've been through this over and over and over, but I don't see that we've changed the ordinance in any way, shape, or form in order to shorten the warnings that we give them or, you know, the allowable time that we give our constituents. You know, and you know, Ms. Rodarte, you know, I get those phone calls all the time and I bring them to you, but, and you know, they think that by coming to their district representative complaining to us about, you know, well, they're asking me, but if you look at your own property, you know, it's full of weeds or if you look, I get this a lot, if you look at a certain district representative, you guys do nothing about his properties and you want me to comply and so, it's a never-ending story, you know? But we've never actually changed the ordinance to shorten the allowable times and now, you know, even the height of the weeds and et cetera, go ahead.
Correct, and I do understand your frustration, also the understanding of we go out there, we enforce, and then it turns into a court. Correct, and, and I do understand your frustration, uh, also the understanding of we go out there, we enforce, and then it turns into a court hearing, uh, the, the city is separated from the court for that specific reason. And sometimes the judge dismisses cases, or sometimes she provides uh, more time. And as long as someone proves that they've moved, you know, this brush of debris to the other side, it's showing her, and she gives them another thirty days, so, but we can't intervene in what the, you know, once it goes to the judge, the judge really pretty much uh, can rule on it. And, and that's, you know, the way the law um, allows us to, to enforce, but we, we do enforce. But I do know that there's a lot of properties in Socorro that are abandoned. And either their owners are going, died or through probate court, or their children just don't really care about the the property. Uh, but, I mean, I, I understand your frustration, I know that we were going to, and I know that Mike's working on several ordinances right now that you should be seeing within the next couple of meetings that they'll be coming into fruition. Uh, just like, remember that we had talked about the abatement process of going in there and, and um, being able to clean up? And, and that's in the works, and he's, he's been working on that. So I, I know that we're getting ready to present that.
Mr. Perez.
Thank you, uh, just two things. Um, first of all, on number two, um, if we can just, and again, it's a misspelling. Uh, or object is completely enclosed in a building or is not visible from a public uh, street, it's this form. So it should be F R O M instead of F O R M. Um, and then, secondly, um, is there a way, and again, I'm not sure the time and effort on this, but maybe have an inventory of those properties that are vacant? Um, for whatever reason, a death, or whatever the case be, probate? Because it may also be beneficial to the city to have that inventory in case we ever need to, you know, uh, gain land, or, you know, whether it's for development, uh, you know, of a, of a city project, whatever the case be. But we would, we would have that on hand, again, I'm not sure if that's already taking place, but it's just a, just an idea.
Mr. Nevades.
I think we oughta start raising awareness, Ms. uh, Rodarte and Mike, by doing some sort of public announcement to let them know what the plan is. And you, going back to what you said earlier, three code enforcers and, and limited resources, but if we do, and raise awareness, and, and let them know that this is coming, that's where I agree with Mr. Reyes, give them three days. Start working on it now, because it continues to be a, a huge eyesore for the city.
Agreed. Mike, I don't know, do you wanna add anything?
Yes, uh, council, I guess first of all, let me, let me just say is that I'm very happy to be back. Uh, and, and working for the city in, in full capacity. Uh, I certainly do not recommend anybody falling, you know, to the devices of, you know, COVID, but but nonetheless is that, you know, one of the things that, that I wanted to, to elaborate from an education, educational purpose as explained by our legal team earlier, is that when we deal with ordinances, obviously, we're talking about purpose and intent of the municipality. And it has a full range of capacity to, you know, legislate what is the expectation through a code. And so normally, when we talk about the purpose of an ordinance, is to establish something that is reasonable and impartial by way of that regulation. And so here, what we're looking at is truncating the expectation of the public to comply with the city requirement through the legislative body, which of course is you all. And so that, that's the purpose, and so when we talk about the intent, is that public interest, what are we trying to preserve? So are we talking about preserving things from a economic development perspective? Are we talking about protecting something from a public transportation infrastructure or water infrastructure uh, perspective? And so we normally call this is that we're doing things from the intent to protect and improve the public health, safety, and the general welfare of everyone. And so uh, part of this is that, going back to the full application and the capability of code, is that we do execute what is required of the law, whether it's at the local level or at the state level. And so there really isn't a very uniform component in its form of the regulation and as a, as a function of time. So as Ms. Rodarte uh, mentioned, is that when it comes to the inoperable vehicles, state law actually kinda dictates what we have to do. And so when we do have an example of that, and we do not have compliance, then that goes to municipal court where it's a whole different component. And so certainly, you know, uh, as a functionality of awareness to promote the purpose and the intent of an ordinance, I, I really think that it's a very good idea in, in the form of educating the public through the media outputs that we have. And so certainly, when we come forward uh, with the recommendations of this ordinance, it, it's something to keep in mind.
Mr. Perez.
Uh, thank you, um, again, this is also uh, concerning in the sense that, for example, and this is just an example. We had given a, a certain business along Socorro Road, uh, this is a mechanic shop, a certain amount of time to clear their junk vehicles. And I passed there almost on daily basis, and the progress has been minimal. And so, you know, that, that kinda speaks to this whole dilemma that we're asking them to comply, and then when it's time for them to actually pony up and, and, and comply, it's not happening. And so um, I, again, I'm not sure what other remedy we have, but um, I think that um, we need to differentiate certainly between businesses and, and the homeowners whereby, you know, if, again, I'm not gonna tell the guy how to do her job, but it, but there has to be, I think, a stricter standard, and, and maybe probably is a stricter standard for businesses, but that's still not happening in terms of cleaning up uh, and moving things out of the premises just as junk, like junk cars.
Mr. Nevades.
Uh, Adriana, let, let me give you an example, uh, right next to Saint Peter and Paul Church is that little clinic, the Wick Clinic. And you do see uh, ladies in and out during the day. But it's extremely, it's shameful and it's embarrassing that they've had their parking lot or the front um, gated area of that clinic full of weeds and trash for the last two months, and no one takes, and I don't know if it's a private entity or whatever the case may be, but no one takes the time or no one lets them know that they need to clean up. And it's, and it's those instances that are extremely embarrassing.
Code? We'll send, we'll send someone out there tomorrow.
Ms. Villalobos, you had a question?
No, I just um, um, I just wanted to tell Mr. Medina, I'm happy to see you back, sir. I was concerned for you, and, and thank God you're, you're still among the living. I'm sorry you had to go through what you, what you did, and I thank God that I, I will be getting my second dose on Saturday and hopefully immune to, to this disease or to this virus, and so. I'm sorry, sir.
I, I'm sorry, thank you so much.
Ms. uh, Ms. Rodarte, um, has, maybe Ms. Dela- Ms. uh, Delarte does, our, our judge, is she aware of us trying to change the, the image? Uh, is she aware, I'm sure she is, she's a, she's a great judge. Um, I don't know, um, and, and I don't wanna influence anything by saying this, okay, but um, you know, I, I know that there's state law, and then there's, there's our laws here, uh, our municipality laws. And I, I'm not sure, Mr. Medina, if they have to coincide with each other, or can one trump over the other regardless of, of, of order? And um, and if so, can that be uh, uh, implemented so that Mrs. Delarte is clear on our intentions or our, our goals?
Well, the, the answer is what we do uh, when we are looking at any new regulatory component uh, that, that's going to be enacted by the body, I mean, the city council. Is that, you know, certainly I take a look at it, I do the, the, the research, the fact checking, and of course, our legal counsel also does that. And so with regard to state, you know, uh, authority and regulation, uh, it, it's what we call primacy. So, so ultimately is that they trump, i- in many cases, uh, what it legislate, or local legislative body can do. However, it's a functionality of how the language is written. And so if it says, you know, may, well then, the, the local body can come back and make it a little bit more restrictive. Uh, but if it says shall, then it's something that is really uh, enforceable, and so state law will trump. So when you look at something like this, it's as if the uh, the Supreme Court of the United States made a motion, or a ruling, or an opinion. That ultimately sets up the, the state of affairs for everybody in the states. So no, no other body but trumped the, the US Supreme Court. And so that's my way of order, so certainly when we come in and we look at a, an update, or we're writing a new ordinance, we do check back to see if we have standing on that language. So in other words, we wanna make sure that when we write the language, it'll lead to state law or a federal law.
And how soon can we see these, these um, proposed changes?
So uh, if this one is, is directed for us to look at it, so normally I spend about a week, a week and a half on it, and depending upon the complexity of it, I, I may reach out to the attorney to, to assist me while we're doing this. Uh, but again, one of the things I, I wanna echo is that the, the processes that we have would require us to have uh, potential hearings of the item. And I think we have to do two of them. Uh, so we have the introduction uh, that comes forward, and then later we come back, uh, within a week of that, is that we have a public hearing, and then the second reading and adoption of the ordinance. I, I don't know if Mr. Martinez wants to add anything else to this.
And Mike described it the process correctly, and typically what, what we do is that Mike or someone else at Ms. Rodarte's direction will, will do the initial draft, and then will come to us for our input. The time-consuming part is the two hearings, I mean, we can have an ordinance back to you for introduction, you know, certainly next month.
Correct, so the ordinances are directed to the city planner, since they're the ones that are enforcing these ordinances, so he, you know, uh, he's the one that provides us feedback, works with legal, and then it, it comes back to council.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent, Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Columbia Lobos.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to move into executive?
Madam Mayor, a motion to go into executive session to consult with our attorney.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent, Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Columbia Lobos.
Yes.
And it is seven fifty-five. If I can have a second to move everybody into the waiting room, that needs to be.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent. Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
It's now eight twelve?
Moving to executive. Just give us a second.
Madam Mayor, motion to delete item number fifteen?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, sorry.
Mayor, we do have a speaker for this item. Miriam Cruz?
Hello, um, well, I mean, obviously, I couldn't hear any discussion and, and, um, I thought it was gonna be an important issue. Um, so I don't really have a comment at this point, other than, um, the legislation that was proposed didn't seem very, um... The only thing I'll say is that I know that you guys mentioned that it might change, but, um, it didn't seem very, let's say, fair or just that, um, depending on, on what a colonia is, that these individuals were gonna be able to be annexed without having a say when, when, you know, different communities, um, have that right to, to be able to vote on it. And so, um, I, I just wanted to make that comment. Obviously, it may change, you guys are talking about it, you guys are delining it, so, um, my comments may be meaningless, but, um, in case that's still an issue with the new legislation that's on the table, uh, I would just comment on, on how unjust it, it may be. Um, and then I actually was hoping that you guys are gonna have a discussion about annexation in general for the city, but maybe that's for another day. Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent. Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number sixteen, discussion action to oppose House Bill twenty-five ninety-two consolidation of law enforcement.
Uh, motion to approve, Madam Mayor, uh, with, and direct staff to issue a letter or statement to the appropriate individuals involved.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent. Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to delete twenty through twenty-two?
Motion to delete items twenty through twenty-two?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent. Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Ralph Duran is absent. Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Be safe, everybody. Be careful.